We wanted to start with some introductions and first I'll introduce Hank Harris, who's been working on our behalf through HYA. And for your benefit and the benefit of others, we can go around and say who we are. So Amy Constance, on the board.
I'm Mike Rosen, on the school board.
Julia, her members incoming board member.
Scott Bailey, incoming board member.
Rita Ward, incoming board member.
Jim Harris, general counsel.
Roger Curtin, RAV, PKA.
Paul Anthony, I'm on the board.
Stephanie Harper, senior legal counsel.
Sarah Duson, board office, Jose, the board office. Members of the public, Ryan.
Brian Dutcher, interim CFO.
Eza Watson, concerned citizen.
Harry Spud, director of strategic communications.
Sherri Reese, interim, you had an email conversation. Nice to meet you. Nice to meet your person.
Hi, Alicia, I'm just a public media member, just want to see what's going on. Great.
And I'm Lois Opersensky, interested citizen.
All right, correct, I've just signed for an introduction.
Where do we sit? Anywhere.
Anywhere.
Who is it?
All right, so Hank and Julia, can I just jump in with where we are at this point?
Can I come up here?
Yeah.
Another copy of agenda, I can have just a little bit distracted.
So we've got a full agenda that we're going to walk through, but we wanted to just start off with a quick review of the work to date. And since we relaunched the task force, we've had several meetings, we've discussed in great detail the position description, what we're looking for, the process, we're not quite over the way to do the process yet. We have shared the position description widely with the community and staff and there's been last four meetings, communicated out to the community about the process that we've been following, asking them for suggestions for candidates. And I think we're in exciting weight of the search now that we're getting ready to actually hopefully invite some candidates who we think need the position description. And before I turn it over to Hank about the process, we had probably more than 40 or 50 recommendations either from board members, community members, staff. HYA also had some candidates that were interested. And from that, there was a matching process that occurred, looking at the candidate's background and qualifications, how close they met them. As everybody on the board knows, that we really refined the position description to be in CRISPR and to prioritize the educational leadership piece of the job description in addition to sort of the systems leader. So from that, and Hank did much of the outreach to candidates, then subsequently both people, candidates who fit the position description to an extent, you can say to what extent, that seemed to be that they were qualified candidates, they were offered the opportunity to contact either Amy or I. And I think between the two of us, we spoke to lots of candidates quite in depth, met some in person. And so based on that, we will now be entering into the next phase of the process. And that seems like a point in time for me to hand it to you.
Thanks. Yeah, it's been, I think, a very encouraging last few weeks. And just to be very brief, I, this district is very special to me. I spent, although I live in Washington DC right now, I spent 15 years of my life living in Portland and two years working in this building. So while I always care deeply about my searches, I care particularly deeply about this search. And it's very encouraging to see as sort of we've moved into the summer that there are very talented people who are intrigued by the opportunity to be in Portland public schools, which is what we all hope and aspire and should expect in this unit, in this district. So that's really, I think, a real positive. And in addition to that, I want to hand, give a hand to the board and the task force because in the interest of excavating this process, we've been, we've been nimbler and I think I'll say a bit more unorthodox than we often are in searches. And Julia was talking about that. And let me just sort of paint that picture a little bit. Typically in a search, and certainly this was the case in your search in the first phase of your search, it's very heavy at the first part of the search with the vetting of candidates. We get names, we hear about people, we call people, we spend a lot of time vetting candidates before bringing it to the board. And the board, in all searches I've ever been involved in before this particular one, meets candidates for the first time, engages with candidates for the first time at the first interview. That's the standard operating procedure. And the board, the task force, I conflict those two, so you'll forgive me if I use the wrong term. I think wisely said, let's, can we flip that a little bit? Can we actually engage with prospects, not necessarily candidates? So think of prospects as somebody who's maybe going to be a candidate, and then candidates once they've decided that they want to actually apply. So if you think about that, you identify two board members, one current board member, one incoming board member, to actually have conversations with people who are just exploring. And as good a search consultant as I aspire to be, I can never, I can never speak in the language that a board can about what it's actually like to be on the board and to have that relationship. And so candidates have that opportunity even before they decided, yeah, I'm in. It was actually a great asset to help them explore, do I want this, do I not? And when I circled back to them, regardless of what their decision was, whether they wanted to go or not, they all had high levels of appreciation for the opportunity to engage and for the time that you spent doing so. I mean, some of them did take, I think, at least a couple hours and you made time to do that. So I think that's great. And I think it's actually made this process particularly rich and has helped to catalyze candidates that were sort of wondering if they wanted to be candidates or if they maybe were just exploring, but maybe not. So good, that's good news. So through the month of June, these conversations have been happening, conversations between myself and candidates, my team, remember you know Hank Gennettrow and Carolyn McKinnon who stayed involved in this search, who also have to reach out to candidates to talk about Portland. And when folks said, okay, I'm willing to, I'm willing to talk, then putting them in touch with Amy and Julia. That's been the bulk of, a lot of the work over really just three weeks. And I'm pleased to say that we have, we have not an insignificant number of folks who are interested in potentially coming for an interview. And so we'll talk more specifically about that tomorrow. And some of those folks, I'll say, I'll say it again tomorrow, some of those folks may still be in the exploring stage. We're allowing that. So we're not, yeah, we're allowing, we're allowing folks to sort of still be, okay, maybe I'm in, maybe I'm not. We're not necessarily requiring everybody to complete, we did not require everybody to complete a full application in order to be considered. We wanted to do this in three weeks. And we know folks are really busy and we don't want to remove people out who might say, I'm interested, but I don't have seven hours to fill out an application in the next two and a half weeks. So I think it's worked, I think it's worked well. And we'll talk more about that tomorrow.
Can I just add something?
Please.
Since tomorrow will be an executive session, and I think it's worth saying, we need that the candidates that we have interested are a really diverse group of candidates. I'm really proud that we have been able to, you know, it's not like we have eight of this kind and maybe five of that and then nothing, you know, of another group. So it's very diverse by most metrics, I would say. And we have a mix of people who have been superintendents, who haven't, they all meet the educational, they have the strong educational leadership background. But it's a, you know, I think it'll be, it's going to present some interesting choices for the board. And because I do think we've got strong candidates, but they all have, you know, slightly, as you can imagine, slightly different experiences, whether it relates to the size of the district, where they are, you know, what they've done in their careers. But I think we're going to have a choice, for sure.
Right, right. And if I could, although you and I have not spoken, Mr. Harris, before now, it's been very apparent that it is you who have been very nimble. And I appreciate it very much. You have been very responsive. And I, yeah, as far as I'm concerned, it's just great. Thank you, thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you. And thanks to both of you guys for putting in the time. That's a lot. A lot.
It's very heartening, actually. It's really, it's exciting, I mean.
Yep, yep, lovely thing. So thank you, thank you. Do you want me to go through some of these?
Sure, we'll just, yeah, we'll just walk through these and you guide us.
So I'd like to have some conversations with tonight around the topic of what does the process look like? What does it look like from the board perspective? What does it look like from the candidate perspective? What does it look like from the community perspective? Confidentiality is certainly an issue that got a lot of airplay over the last several months as we had to think through a tough decision that all boards have to think through, is to what level can we assure or do we want to assure confidentiality for candidates? I don't need to rehash all the pros and cons, it's a tough decision for a board to make. There's certainly our candidates, there's certainly our candidates and a fair number of candidates who are asking questions about how confidential will this search be? And it matters for all those reasons that, you know, whether you agree or don't agree, it's all those reasons that people put forth. So the board made a decision last spring, last winter, to a model that assured a level of confidentiality throughout the process until either one or potentially one or two finalists would be named. So that was a decision the board made. And what that process looked like more specifically was that the board would be involved in interviews and a community stakeholder group would be involved in interviews. That community stakeholder group was sought to include various members of the public that represented various stakeholder groups, each one of whom signed an affidavit of confidentiality. And that that was the community involvement. And at some point in the future, this is the board making decisions before one was announced. I believe the board didn't necessarily say, we'll only announce one. I believe the board said, when we have a finalist or a couple of finalists, those things will be public. Do I kind of have that right? Is that kind of what the process was? So I would, so when candidates have asked me in the last few weeks, what's the process? My answer has been, that is the process, what I just described, is the process, until or unless I heard differently from the board. So I'd like to ask if the board, the board is agreeable to continuing that process, that there are interviews with board, there's interview with a community stakeholder group, potentially the very same stakeholder group? And then at a point in time where a finalist or potentially more than one finalist is named, then there might be public at that point.
Is there just to add in to the, talking about process, we also talked about having other opportunities for board engagement. That's not just the formal panel interview because that is sort of one way that people, candidates present themselves. And some people do that very well, others not so well, but we want to get to know the candidates a lot better, so. I know you didn't mention that.
No, but there has been a lot of community involvement, so please go with that because that's important to service that.
Just more points of contact and different points of contact with different things with the finalists.
So the board, it's, just because I didn't participate in the last process, but that going to picking, you know, inviting somebody to, it's like inviting them to meet your mother and you've only met them once. And that's kind of what happened, you know, the community leaders who participated, the board had only met a person once. And that, that's, I'm not comfortable with that. And we had a discussion and some, I think some good ideas from the board about ways in which, formats of engagement that are different than just a panel interview.
So the process, sort of to stick back what I think I understood from you, so the process might be that when, when we are engaging in interviews, it may not, it may not, and maybe should not always be a formal, everybody sits around the table, candidate sits over there, we take turns asking questions. That might be part of the process, but that the process ought to be richer than that.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. And are we, are we allowed to make decisions in this form?
Well, I mean, not really because we don't want to make decisions as the sitting board on these issues. We want to be inclusive of incoming members who don't have any authority vested yet, so.
Okay.
Do you need a decision?
What? I think we want to take the temperature of.
Can we take temperature?
We know where.
Let's take temperature, we can take temperature, okay.
Right.
So I think the only points, I mean, I think we were all agreed on that sort of different ways of putting people through the paces. And I thought there was pretty strong agreement on a community panel, again, confidential. I think the one piece in terms of confidentiality was whether we want to be, still be somewhat ambiguous as to if we get down to three, is it going to be public at that point or not, or maybe.
Which is, it's a little difficult because, yes, we did say that because it partly depends on what we know about those finalists and what might be a deal killer for those individuals. But it's also difficult because people are considering whether or not they want to continue with the process based on what, how public it might end up being.
So I think one of the things, I'll just speak generally, so this is not to a specific candidate, but if you're currently a superintendent of a decent sized district, you have a lot more potentially to lose by engaging in a public process that, potentially, or a long public process than somebody who's, for example, a number two. In fact, you know, I've talked to a fair number of number twos and they, you know, that, to them, that's like actually career enhancing. They got considered as a finalist in a process even if they don't get it, where it's a little bit different. So, you know, each candidate's going to approach it a little bit differently and, you know, it may be that we say, you know, it's just going to be this way and people either engage or not, or we continue to, or we have some flexibility. I don't think we're going to be, I don't think I heard anybody say they want it completely
But are we still talking about getting down to three strong finalists? And then what?
Yeah, so we'll, I mean, this is where I think there's some, and I'll let Hank speak too, there's some sorting. I mean, when candidates, I mean, the reality is, they look at who else is in the pool and make judgments about.
How much risk is involved for me? What's my shot at this job relative to the risk of exposing myself to?
And I would say if it's three, then to me, that's about as open a process as it gets. Because when you look at other superintendent searches, they don't typically list the 12 people to apply publicly. But they do list, you know, and you've seen them, they do the sort of the public forum.
Kind of one to three.
So that's, I think that's our rank, but one to three, meaning if three, I don't, and three is fine if you decide to do round three. I wouldn't call three a good confidential process, that's all. I'd say that's more an open process.
Yes.
And I guess two is somewhere in the middle, right? And it is sort of as Amy described, if you're the candidate, you're like, all right, if I get the final two, maybe I'll take that risk. I'm in the final three, you know, I've got one of three chance. There is risk, so. And I don't know that you have to absolutely decide the number right now. And if you're comfortable not, I will. But what I have told prospects is that when I call them, and if I call them with imitation, that I will give them what the board is saying. So if the board is saying, we're not certain it's going to only be one finalist, it might be two, and I want to at least give people that information at this point. I don't want to surprise them at the end, right?
Can I ask one question about the community stakeholders group? At what point does that happen? Is that at the three or is it prior to?
That's a question, I want to have that conversation. I think, I don't actually, I think last time, I'm not sure where it was.
It was three.
I think there's, so that's one way. Another way is to do them after the first interview, and then they provide feedback to the board so that when you're seeing a candidate for the second time, in the middle, they've actually seen the community stakeholder group and then who has informed you of, so that's another way to do that.
Yeah, that seems like an awful lot of.
Trips.
Time. Well, and like money and resources, I mean, okay, what I found is usually you interview, and there's a couple, so say we pick six, there's a couple that's just like, hmm, not the right fit, for sure. And we don't want to waste the community's time.
For sure, you want to whittle people out after round one.
So, I mean, only speaking for myself, I would rather do it when we have a smaller group and get their feedback on the ones that we really think this could be the one.
Okay, so you're saying, you know, whittle it down after round one. So I guess, how many rounds are we talking about? Because I think we were talking about having three contacts.
I think we're talking three.
Right? So at what point do we do, what does the, what does the first contact look like? What does the second contact look like? And then the third? And where does the community stakeholder?
So I think the board should figure that out. I'm going to recommend though that round one be a traditional interview.
So round, round one or pre-one is what we do tomorrow, which is having a conversation about the candidates based on what we know of them on paper.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And deciding who we want to interview, being very liberal about keeping that pool, you know, big. That's our first level of vetting.
That's the first, yeah, that's true. I mean, tomorrow night is a vetting, right? So we'll put that up here. And then round one, I'm going to recommend that they come for an interview only with the board. The board will meet however many candidates, that's actually later in their agenda to talk about numbers. And you are going to narrow this. There are going to be people you meet around one that you're going to be like, not the right match. So there is a whittling down. And then the question becomes, what would you like at round two? Do you want, as a board, want to meet with them again and maybe have a different kind of format? So not necessarily the traditional panel interview, but as Julia was describing, a couple of you meeting, and then another couple of you meeting that's more informal and more kind of looser? Do you want to do that as your second step?
Yeah.
I had brought out the community, but there are costs and, you know, that's a lot of time, so it's your call, you go either way on this.
So I'd, I'd rather get to the three because there's going to be some mutual, like, they're going to be selling themselves, but we're also going to want to, there are going to be people who might want to get out. We're going to be doing some convincing people to stay in the process as well. And I'd rather get, use that informal, you know, the second time when you have more sort of informal as our way to get down, but these are the three that I would want the community need to meet. But the community need, have them inform, sort of, the last step for the board for another, another round.
So that's four contacts, right?
Three.
Round one, round two is the board.
It's three of the board.
Three board contacts, one community contact.
Yeah. What were we going to say?
And that's, that's an option. One thing for the board to think about, and every community's different, is, no, I think I'm good, I think I'm good. Let's hear from other voices.
Can you explain the community process again and who are the, you don't have to identify the stakeholders, but is the stakeholders representing each zone from each board member? And is it diverse?
I believe it is, but I actually, since I didn't do the first part of the search, I don't know specifically who those people are. Someone want to state that?
It was a diverse group of people, it wasn't based on zone, it wasn't, people weren't chosen, individuals weren't chosen. It was a slate that was chosen in terms of stakeholders representing different groups. So one of the things that we've talked about, for example, next time around, is maybe splitting a community panel or stakeholder panel between employees in one and external in the other because we got some feedback that the interests and questions and level of understanding were so different, it didn't really work to have them all together, which that makes sense to me. But then we had, bless you, we had, you know, different community-based organizations represented, and PAT, and the business community, and we had, the county had a designated, and the mayor had a designated. What else?
We had some union, other organizations as well.
Yeah.
Student.
Student. Other. Publicly listed somewhere on their website, yes?
I can have the list, I don't think they were, I don't think the individuals on the list.
So I think that's another discussion that we need.
Concordia was on there.
Partners, higher ed partners, they were the one. That's another conversation that we need to have, okay? If we are having a community panel, do we want to revisit those, who they were, who might not have been at the table?
Really, we need to do that really next day because we need to calendar.
Right.
Not only for community members, but for board members, depending on when their second round falls, right?
Okay, seems to me that we have two choices with the community group. If we, if we, if we have the community stakeholders meet with the finalists, it feels to me like that's pretty late in the game. Like you've already, it's already kind of baked. It's three quarters baked in that one. If we did it at the second round, then the community would be in a position to help us identify the finalists. And that feels a little more meaningful.
So can we, can we do some approximate numbers? So this first set of interviews, we want to get down to.
So we'll start tomorrow with, is it eight or nine?
Eleven.
That are on the portal right now.
Let's, why don't we focus on how many we want to invite for interviews?
Right, but I mean, we start with, you know, tomorrow we'll look at all of them and we'll say, there, you know, we want to identify six or seven, which is not going to be a predetermined number, but determined by those that are compelling from that group.
Sure, so I'm going to put a seven, just like, just, you know, for example, let's say we have seven that come to round one. And this is all, of course, we don't know because we don't, you know, we're just guestimating here. So you might pull four out of that, let's just say, into a second round. Does that seem about right? So the, so there's, so let me spell out a couple other options. So you could do, you could have, you could have these four candidates come to Portland and spend day one with community group, and day two, so it's a single trip. Day one is with the community group, the community group's spending an hour with each of these four people. I'm with that community group, I'm bringing their notes and their feedback and their warm and their cools to you the next day. Candidates are still here. So it's just one trip, one night. And they meet with the board the next day. But the board has the benefit of the notes from the community group, which will help you think through and make sense of your questions and maybe see things that you didn't necessarily see the first time around. How does that sound?
That was, that's how we did it last time.
Oh, that's exactly what you did?
Yep.
Okay.
Except for then, then that ended. I mean, after that, then they settled on a fine.
Yeah, they did. That was just one candidate.
All the way, I see.
Okay, three.
So how many candidates did the community group?
Three.
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 And we weren't allowed to rank them, so it just provided.
I know, he said.
And I mean, that could happen again too, right? Like, like let's say you do have four that come through. And let's say there is one superstar. Do you want to still invest in another round and pull people in when you've sort of?
Well, I guess I would say, I don't, I don't think, I don't know if somebody is a superstar based on two interactions.
And first of all, there, I really do not think that we want to lock ourselves into just one candidate before we've done the kind of extensive background search that we've talked about.
Yeah, we're going to get to that.
Something else I want to throw out, that although, I mean, yes, like we heard, there were ways that the committee could have avoided some frustrations, some improvements that we might have made to it. The feedback that we actually got from the committee was one of the really bright spots in the whole search. I thought it did a very, very fine job.
We were tired.
Oh, you mean the feedback that was, it was right in the sense that it was very useful to us?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, very.
Yeah.
So is four the right number for that round? Or did we talk to seven, get four, go back and find three or four more to get five or six? So that, I'm having, I, I know it's, there's numbers and there's process, but the numbers to me help define the process.
I think we're going to be good at, I mean, if we get four good, solid candidates, I mean, I think it's going to be really hard, I think, to go from seven to four. But at a certain point, you have to start using criteria of.
I mean, I had to get from 11 to seven myself.
Maybe it will be two.
Yeah.
And again, I mean, I know we all know this. These numbers are not hard, fast. Like the four could be a five.
Yeah.
I mean, and it's hard on two levels. It's hard individually and it's hard collectively.
Right.
But if, if we go to a point where it is, say, four or whatever number that is, whether people have said, no, I'm not the right person. Or we've said, man, do we have, do we have that number defined to say that's too small?
See, I don't think you can say that because then I think sometimes you get into basically, I think something is a bad situation for candidates. It's like, we got to have another person in the pool just to have a person in and that's.
Sacrificial lamb.
Well, but you talked about replenishments.
Well, I think we replenish if there's other people we want to see. But at a certain point, potentially it could be, there's, you know, two really strong candidates and you're not going to get everyone in because they're going to look at it. It's like, one of these two guys are, they're down, so they're going to hit the position. And this is where it becomes the art, not the science. But I don't think you want to put somebody in just as we want another warm body so that we can say we had X number. Now, if we really think it's not as, we don't have more than one strong candidate and there's somebody else you really want in, I think we have a possibility of putting them in.
Well, you're certainly reserving your right to declare it a bitter bunch and start over.
Sure.
Yeah. Amen.
So what else do you need here? So we've got.
So it seemed like there was some energy around a model which kind of mirrored what you did last time, which is round two is community. Round two A is community and round two B, these are, these are kind of co-located board in that order, right?
Okay, then you have the background checks and the contracts.
Please don't judge me on my handwriting on easel paper.
Around the corner.
Thank you. Background checks, because we're literally done here. And contracts. So the idea would be that maybe at this point, I'm going to say two to three. You narrowed it down to two to three. You are going to do background checks at that time. You're going to put together prototype contracts for each individual so that, so that when.
Yeah, round three.
This is, somebody needs to make this look prettier, but. This is round one. This is round two. And this is round three. And whatever this final process is, you're kind of ready to go. Whoever emerges from round three doesn't need to necessarily be a three to four week wait while we do background checks. You're already done ahead of time.
Do you want to just stop for a minute to see?
Call Julie.
Call Julie.
Hi, it's Julie.
Hi Julie, we have you here at the board session.
Okay.
We're just, we're talking process in terms of rounds of interviews. So the first part of the process is what we'll do tomorrow, which is having a conversation based on the background that we've seen through the portal. And from that, collectively identifying how many people and whom we want to interview. That's, so that's, you know, the pre-round. Then round one is interviews, which of course will be determined by how compelling the candidates are and how much we can agree. But we're saying somewhere in the neighborhood of seven people coming for first round of interviews. Then, you know, further whittling, having second round of interviews in person with, maybe is it four candidates again, depending on the individuals and the extent to which we agree or see things similarly. And then on that same trip, they would do the, some kind of community panel similar to before. Then the next round would be, you know, background checks and contract work done. And then, you know, the last round remains to be seen whether, you know, is that a couple of candidates? And to what extent is that public?
Okay, thank you.
Fair? Not fair?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
And we did talk a little bit about the confidentiality of the process. And, you know, it was kind of chicken and egg because the, I think our determination as a board partly depends on the inclination of the individuals that rise to the top. Is that fair?
Hmm, okay, okay.
We didn't really land, we didn't really land that before we, well, I guess we haven't moved on from that. Is there anything more we want to talk about in terms of how we arrive at the confidentiality?
I'll put out there that this number makes me, this number as three finalists that are publicly announced does make me think that there will be people that will opt out of the process.
Well, and especially because with background checks and contract, the other piece of that is reference checks. So when you start doing those broad reference checks, that's becoming public for them.
So I do think if the board could say, all right, we will, we will do two. I understand the board doesn't want just one over here.
Yeah.
And I think that's important that the candidates know that. So I think if the boards can settle on that, I think that's easier for somebody to not get squeakly.
I agree. I'd be comfortable with that.
So that makes round two really critical.
They're coming out, so I couldn't really hear him, sorry.
Unfortunately, we're in the basement, so it's kind of, sorry.
Is there a way for the chair in the center of the, I don't know.
Oh, it's far as hearing, I don't think it's the, I don't think it's, you can't hear, I think it's.
Oh, she's on the phone.
Okay, anyway.
Is there a chair that we can just?
We're working on your behalf, Julie.
Oh, thank you.
See if that's better.
Is that better?
What do people think about Hank's judgment that, or experience, I should say probably, that from the candidate's point of view, two finalists is different than three finalists?
I don't plan that, I mean, I mean.
I think the only time we'd get three, three candidates to do any sort of public process is if they were all not yet in a sitting, well, they'd all be non-sitting super candidates.
And I hope that's not where we end up.
Okay, so, so let's assume we have two finalists. And, and it goes public in the sense that we announce we have two finalists and these are their names, right? Is there anything else that would be public that would be transpiring in round three?
Like what do you mean?
Like, I mean, yeah, I mean, I'm just, I don't know, meet and greets or, you know, anything other than a closed board, you know, another set of interviews of some kind? And then the board makes a decision and then we call it good. And then, then we make a decision and there it is.
And that happens during the public, it's a very short timeline to turn around.
See, I, I see the public, that this happening here because, again, I don't want somebody's name public after we've only met them.
Okay, so, so round three would happen. So what would happen in round three?
I think it's like, okay, would we be willing to hire these?
Yeah.
Like, is there one or is there two we're willing to hire? And if there's more, then you get it down to a smaller number. But that's the point with like, I don't think you should introduce anybody to the community that we're not.
But I think maybe what I hear in your question is, okay, so let's walk this through. So you've got two finalists. They're coming to meet with the board now for round three. You guys settle on somebody. So now it's kind of weird to send the two out to the public when you've already sort of.
Right.
I mean, unless you think that the board can stay super neutral about it until they've heard from the board, from the public.
Yes, I'm a little confused about.
I think this is either, I think this is either a board interview or it's a public meet and greet. I don't, I don't see both.
Yeah.
I mean, the public meet and greet is never the end of the game. The public meet and greet informs a board conversation. So, so it's either a board conversation or it's some kind of a public thing, which then informs a board conversation. But I, so I think it's, it's to you to decide, is that public piece? Is that what you want to do or do you want to not do that?
Okay, so, so what are the options in terms of public peace? I mean, personally, a meet and greet doesn't do much for me.
No, but remember that if you, that may be, but remember if you make names public, you're going to hear from people one way or the other anyway, right? So.
Geez, they.
So, I mean, so you could simply announce the names. You could do that.
And say the board is considering.
Right? But I think you're only doing that because you want some degree of input from the community, right? So then it's a matter of figuring out what's the, what's the mode by which the community provides that. And you probably want to manage that, otherwise you'll, you'll get it in ways you don't want it.
Which is so, well, it's so tricky because it's, we have such a large and diverse community.
Right.
That it's.
And this is happening in the middle of the summer.
It's very difficult to.
And it's happening in the middle of summer.
Not just the loudest voices.
Yeah. And there's people that don't want to, there's candidates that don't want to go through that.
Right.
Right.
We, I have already spoken to several of them.
Yeah.
Made that perfectly clear.
Okay, so, so here's my question. If we were going to do, because I'm, I'm now wondering if a public anything is actually meaningful at that point. So what are the options about the kind of public something that could happen at a round three that would be, that would be worth everybody's watch? And worth the risk of losing potentially good candidates or potentially losing good candidates?
So one thing we did before was, you know, two candidates. It was, their names were made public in the morning. They had, I mean, at that time we had the sort of a community or stakeholder group meeting. But then you had like a town hall that had like a, an MC, like the board was there, but it had an opportunity that was facilitated. It wasn't a town hall like you think like those congressional town halls, but more, like people had an opportunity to come and submit questions. And, you know, candidates took questions for an hour. And they, they gave a presentation or, you know, did their opening spiel and then answered questions that were submitted through a moderator and.
So each candidate or both?
We did it before. We had two candidates willing to do it. They also, they've been told like by the end of the day, you'll either know that you're being given a job or being offered a job or, or you're not. And so.
Or flowers that sit in your.
Well, I mean, there's, there's some real value to, like, so the candidate is not chosen. They're not hung out there for a long period of time. And then the issue for, I mean, there's risks for the board not moving quickly because in 2001, five candidates came and then they, they went back to their hometowns and their mayors and their chambers of commerce and their communities.
They all got $100,000 raises.
Yeah, and then they, like, we are saw them again. So there's a little bit of, I say.
So to kind of re-ask your question, is there something that would make a difference to us as decision makers that would come out of some kind of public process?
Yeah, that's the right question to ask.
And if there, if there is, great, let's figure it out. Is, do we want to see them in front of this group of stakeholders being peppered with questions and see how they do? Is that useful for us to see? Would that help us in our decision making? Is there some other kind of setting or process involving the public that would get us some data that would say, hey, we're, we're, we're pretty evenly split on these two folks. Wow, that's going to give us the one that'll say this one, not that one.
For my part, Scott, I would say yes to your first question. Yes, it would help me, seeing them in front of a group, as diverse group of the community as we can get and have that group pepper them with questions and see how they do. One of the things that I've been thinking about a lot and have been really glad to see you talking about, Julia, is we need someone leading the district who can be, who could do well in that kind of situation. Who can be a real political leader, who can be the, the face of the district. And I don't know of any other way to really see if that's going to work in Portland and in Oregon than just throwing them into it. Now, getting there may not be practical, but that is really what I would like to see.
Well, I can say, I, I think it's worth saying that that would be what we'd like to do. And I think we might need to see if anybody's willing to do it. If we're going to get two candidates to do it. And I guess the one thing I would say, having gone through a lot of these public processes, is that I don't, I wouldn't label it as being peppered by the community. I mean, I think it needs to be respectful and professional. And I think both candidates need to get the same question. So however that happens, but it's not, because this is where you really can get process, a, a process that, you know, people utilize against a candidate. And I don't think that's necessary.
Yeah, yeah, I completely agree. And actually, if, just as you said it, if we could come out of this tonight saying, this would be our ideal, let's wait and see how the, the final candidates feel about that. I would be very happy with that.
Does that work?
Yeah. Well, I mean.
Well, you just say there's the process.
Sorry?
I make you nervous.
No, I actually, it gave me some relief, actually. It gave me some relief that there was like.
It's so rare that I can do that.
Because I don't want, I mean, none of us do. I don't want to lose a really strong candidate who says, I'm just not doing that. Like, I'm not doing that. I'd love to come to Portland, I'm not doing that. I think there's more than one in the group that probably would say that. So, so if there's wiggle room, so while you were having that conversation, I was thinking, when I make phone calls on Wednesday morning, how many people are going to say, thanks, no thanks? So if there's wiggle room, that, that is giving me a little bit of relief, yeah.
So my question for Paul is, then how is that different from having a community panel? Ask questions.
Well, anybody can show up.
Well, I mean, it's, it's different in terms of who shows up in that sense. But is it going to get us more?
I think, yeah. And my first thought there, Scott, is that it's less of a controlled environment. Even if you've got just one person down in front. Even if you've got just one person down in front, reading off questions that people have written on three by five cards, it's less of a controlled environment, there's more pressure on them, and, you know, it, it's public instead of private. I think that there is a real qualitative difference in how people respond in, in public versus private, and that that's worth seeing.
Fair enough. So, one thing, and this is different from last time, it's like, I, the introduction of social media.
Yep.
And the impact. So last time, we had, it was televised, like, on channel 28, and, I mean, they went to that report, I mean, they did a lot of things, but it, there wasn't social media that somebody could be, you know, ripping a candidate as they're sitting in a public forum, and so I, I don't know which...
Which candidates are aware of.
So, hey, do you, I mean, what advice do you have for us on that?
Yeah, I mean, if you make it public, you can't control all those things.
So have your cell phone before you come into the meeting?
Okay, here's the thing, though. Anybody who comes here...
That was a true question.
Better be ready to put up with that, or they shouldn't be coming here.
Well, no, not for the people who are coming here but not necessarily staying and leaving eternally tarnished by their brush with Portland.
But I, I mean, if, if somebody, I, I'm just going to push back a little because I think if somebody is going to say, no, thank you, that the prospect of a public meeting does...
It's not, it's not the prospect of, must say, a public meeting, it's the...
It's the outing yourself as I'm, I'm about ready to bail out of my home district, right?
Well, no, I'm thinking about candidates just being slandered.
Yeah.
So I've been, like, through so many of these, and there often gets to be a group of, we don't want them, and our way to, like, get them out is, you know, making it as bad as, you know, bad as possible for the, the remaining, the remaining candidate they want out.
So I wonder, I wonder, I haven't done this before, but I think it's worth exploring, and you are exploring it at the beginning of the interviews for a little more, but what is the outcome that the public event provides? And so, I think, Paul, I think I saw, I heard you saying, I want to see this person in action in sort of a, a real life, public situation.
Yep.
Which is, which is a good answer, different than another answer, which might be, I want to hear from the multitude of voices of the city of Portland. If it's, if it's more what you described, and I haven't done this before, but I'm thinking if it's doable, could we create that in a quasi-private way? Could we fill this room with 75 people who have each signed a confidentiality something? Could we, could we construct that without letting them, you know, go fully public and potentially suffer some of the things that people do when they are out there in the public eye?
As another way to get at what I perceive to be pretty much what you're talking about there, would we even have to tell people even 24 hours ahead of time who those people would be if we tell, you know, announce it publicly at the beginning of a day? And have it, have it give it...
I don't think that really makes that much of a difference anymore.
It could be when they walk in the room.
Yeah, well, I, I, and, you know, be passing out copies of people's resumes. What I heard you describing, Julia, is essentially people going, electronically going back to their home districts, finding people there who would have an axe to grind and then bringing that in.
Well, I'm just saying the process could be totally screwed and skewed by advocacy, so...
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I think the state chief education officer, so like, there were some people who didn't want one of the candidates, and so, I mean, Rudy Crew got a free pass by a lot of, a lot of people that, because there was a, we don't want us, and a kind of manipulation of the process. So I, I think we should just be, like, I think your question is the right one, like, what do we hope to get out of it? Do we, do we want to just see how they operate, or do we want to, whoever comes, they fell in a, like, a, you know, some sort of form of, that asked them to do something, that's what we did before, and then we sat in an executive session and read all the comments and...
And Julia, and, and everybody, I just want to chime in, it's, I get, it's, it's coming in and out, it's a little hard to follow, but in terms of, I am really concerned about the public media issue also, and I want to come up with a way where it's not, where they have somewhat controls, because I agree with Amy that I don't think that them applying here should then give them some negative, you know, some negative negativity on their candidacy or just their professionalism.
How can you avoid that? Well, I think...
Now everybody's totally gone.
No, no, we're here, we're, we're on the stage.
Oh, okay.
We're thinking, so I, I think we could, and I'm just thinking out loud here, I'm almost, I'm almost going back to the yes, surrender your phone before you walked into the room thing, it's a little more serious of an idea, and saying, but if we do a session like that, session ends, board meets, votes, boom, done. So whatever anybody puts on, tweets or whatever, isn't part of our process.
But then what was the point? I mean, if the point was just for us to experience it and see it?
The point is for us to see a person in action.
Yeah.
A candidate see in action, in a candidate.
Yeah.
On the page, yeah.
And to see how a crowd of non-professional educators, you know, a crowd not in the weeds on all of this reacts to that person.
Since there, there won't be a direct interchange...
Yeah.
Because it's going to be somebody reading questions, we'll just kind of go by more...
Yes, I think that people have ways of letting you know.
But, so I think that's disrespectful for the, for the candidates.
Okay.
I mean, to make it into a, like, who got the most cheers, I mean, because you get...
Yeah, or like, we're checking a box in terms of public vetting.
But, that's why I'm trying, I'm trying to, I'm trying to imagine how this could work or not work, and I think that's what I'm trying to do is...
Right, no.
Okay, so, go back to the community stakeholders.
So round two.
So round two. Wow. What is the, what information, so we're talking about potentially doing a stakeholders group and then a, you know, and then some sort of larger come one, come all, right? And then your suggestion was, how about we kind of make it a controlled group? We invite a bunch of people?
It was just a thought, I don't know if it was yesterday, it was a thought.
Well, okay, so, so my question is, would it make more sense to, to make that, to do that as the community stakeholders meeting, as opposed to picking however many, you know, a dozen, 15 representatives of particular organizations or groups? And, you know, what if, what if the public came earlier, but it was more controlled? Does that make any sense?
I mean, my first hit is that you would lose more candidates, because you'd have that broader pool at that time, and you'd have more people that aren't willing to engage in that, and then also, that's very unlikely, that you could maintain confidentiality when you're, with a pool that's, with a group of people that's that much bigger. And we did maintain confidentiality before with our community panel.
Yes, and I, I was very, very pleasantly surprised at how well that worked. I, I would be sure that, I wasn't setting ourselves up.
I would think you get more meaningful information for the board to consider from a focused stakeholder group like you used, but I...
I agree.
Because we, we started out with 38 questions when we, we first met, and we drilled down to 18, and then, and each candidate was asked those, and, and that's a more meaningful, I think, data than, than you might get from a larger group of, of public at that point.
So, how come, you know, this why then, was the, were the three, did you, why is there the perception that you had three with candidates, that you had, like, imbalance in the type of candidates that came? Do you think it's like, when people thought, like, I'm going to go meet with the community panel, that people exempt themselves out? Or it just...
Are you talking about...
Last time?
Yeah, last time, or the original pool just wasn't...
Just one?
I, I, I wasn't intimately involved, I don't, I don't know, you're talking about in the first part of the search.
Well, I was saying, when they got to the community, like, people who talked, I talked to in the community said, you know, there seemed to be only one really strong candidate. And so, it's like, did that, the fact that they were going to go meet with the community result in people getting out, like, did you invite...
Only one.
Okay. But a strong one?
A strong one, yeah, sitting superintendent.
We moved him or herself, was it?
Uh-huh, before that.
Right.
Because of the stakeholder meeting?
Because of feared of losing confidentiality at the end, because of his relationship with his board and his community.
And he, just on this search, he had just been participated in interviews the year before, and he was just building back his relationship with his board.
And he described it, just like you said, he did the calculus, three people, what's my likelihood of getting this job, I'm putting a lot at stake.
So where do we go with this?
Yeah, we got it, we're, it's seven o'clock.
So I think, there was a moment in time when you said, like, I could live with that.
With the two or three, and then maybe some public vetting process, depending on how those two or three, those two individuals feel about it.
Yeah, I mean, are you asking what that was? What was that moment?
Yeah, I'm trying to...
And that moment was, and I, I think I was thinking two.
Two, right.
But I mean, there was, there was, I think that the suggestion was, let's, let's be open minded, we like a public process at the end, but if we have candidates that, you know, are really strong, who say, not going to do that, then there'll, there'll be some wiggle room around that. So, and if the board is comfortable with that, then, then that gives me some, some comfort. My prediction would be that you will have a candidate at that point who'll say, but maybe I'm wrong, and so maybe there would be a public process, and maybe everybody would be happy with that. So if there's, if, if the board, it sounds like the board, the board maybe is, is okay with that, that we leave this somewhat open, depending on what the candidates, so the candidates know that they will have some opportunity to, to weigh in on that.
Roger.
Is there a certain criteria that you guys are looking for in terms of the superintendents? Can we find that online?
Yep.
It's on the website?
There's, yeah.
Because it, it seems like to me if they're afraid of the community, I mean, is that somebody that you guys want, someone that's afraid to reveal themselves to the community? Because that's kind of concerning to me.
Yeah, I don't think that that's what we're talking about. I think we're just talking about their, their calculus about their current job and their current role, and, you know, we don't want anybody who's not going to be able to take the heat in a, you know, any kind of situation with members of our community.
So the position description can be found on the PPS website, under the superintendent. I was thinking also, was it...
I'm going to send you the link.
Can we make sure that we have copies of that for our executive session tomorrow so that we're keeping that always front and center of what we said and wanted?
And can I suggest that you guys have a community process at the beginning, not towards the end?
Well, so we're using, you know, we had a really broad community process at the beginning of the prior search, in terms of doing lots of interviews, lots of open forums, lots of feedback. I mean, that, that information is on the website too, I think, in terms of the number of people that we heard from, people that participated in a survey, and then how all of that got distilled into what we're using as, in terms of what we're looking for. So we are, we're not redoing that part of, that big wide net, that part of the process.
Is there a way that you can show the weight that you've given to the community board?
Yeah.
In the decision-making process? And I'm just asking, because as a community member, sometimes it seems like decisions are made arbitrarily, and that the community is only consulted for show, so it, this is just a conversation I had a night with my wife. Is, is there a way that you could say, we consider this input from our community, and X percent of our decision was made based on that?
Well, we can, I mean, we can definitely say that now in terms of the position description and what has gone into it as far as being fed by that feedback that we got. We might be able to do a better job of relaying that back out to the community.
It looks like, like, from the diagram that you have right there, you, at, at round, at the intermission between round one and round two, there's some, there's going to be some decision-making on which candidates go to the next round. Is there a way to give the community voice some weight in that decision-making part?
So, I, I can just say, by law, it's the board's responsibility to pick the superintendent.
Yeah, it is by law the board's responsibility, but it's also the board represents those people that...
Well, I was going to say, as each, I think, board member, sometimes you'll, you may get a representative community at the table, and other times, you're, you're, you're not. And so I, I think it's a, it's a hard question because, absolutely, like, every voting, it's kind of hard to say, like, that, this was authentic community, this was, like, really what the community said, and that weight amounts into my decision-making, because it may be, well, frankly, we didn't have this pretty good community there, and so I, you know, I didn't think that community was representative necessarily of the broader community.
So I, I think, and I'm just new to this process, I think what we've heard is, the community input really helped to find the job description, which is getting us through down into round two. And then everybody on the prior board has said, the community panel gave extremely helpful input before, and I have no reason to think why that wouldn't happen again. And it's hard to say wait that, but it just, everybody who's involved before said that was really important, and I think the community members that some of us have talked to have said, we've helped listen to, so...
I wonder if the gentleman, some of his concerns might also be addressed, it's the identity of those who served on the stakeholder group is made known. I had a discussion with staff here as to whether we could identify who served on it, and they felt the confidentiality agreement for included, identifying those who served on it.
I don't know about that.
So, I, anyway, I have no...
Yeah. We did identify...
Feeling about that whatsoever.
Okay, can, can, so if that's in, can we sell that? I mean, my personal opinion, we need to announce who's on the stakeholder, because...
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see that as a stubborn walk-in anyway with the people who participated, that wasn't something that they...
Because my feeling was, it was a very widely representative group, and, and I think the community ought to know that and, and have, be able to identify, oh, my representative was on there, so...
I think one concern might be if that group is not going in, is it...
Lobbying?
Yeah, if the people don't know that you might have been part of the group, and you're not going to get phone calls saying, who did you talk to, who did you talk to, who did you talk to? And it cuts down the temptation or the...
We all sign that confidentiality thing, like serving on a jury. You don't discuss it.
So I just want to do a time check.
Yeah, we need to get, but we can definitely explore that, are we...
Do we have enough to go to getting the seven?
Yeah, so I think...
Getting seven on you, I think it's going to be hard to get to seven, but yeah. And Hank?
Okay, so seven down to some number, down to two with the help of a community board.
Yeah.
At that point, there's some negotiation. I think we're, I, I don't know that we have a clear consensus to say a community, a broad community meeting would give us one more piece of really important information. Paul's definitely there, I'm kind of halfway there.
If you could do, if you could do it in a way that's respectful, professional, and does not leave people out hanging, I could probably get there, but...
And that also isn't a deal killer for the particular individuals who have gotten to that threshold.
Yeah.
It kind of sounds like you're talking about a similar forum, that the... It kinda sounds like you're talking about a similar forum that, that, like, the voters conducted when you guys were running for office, so, um...
Which I wouldn't wish on anybody for, but, you know.
So, so of course you're gonna run your candidacy.
You don't, you don't put a two-minute limit on the answers, probably.
Hank, do you, uh, are you getting enough of a clear directive in terms of how you're able to communicate with the candidates about the process? That there's still some, you know, flexibility, definitely, but, yeah?
I'm hearing flexibility. I'm hearing that there'll be more discussion on this. I think I'm also hearing that there's a candidate that says, and I, so I just wanna make sure that, that this is my talking point when I talk to candidates. So I think I'm hearing that if a candidate is adamantly opposed to seeing out in, in this term, then that would be taken under consideration by the board.
Yeah.
But they would, they, I think what's non-negotiable is that do you have a confidential community panel?
Yes.
That they can take a pass on that?
Absolutely.
Right, right. You can't opt out of that, but nobody opted that before, but I, yeah.
Okay, so I think the rest actually should go pretty quickly.
They might.
Yep, let's do it. So consultant process, um-
Yes.
Liaison, that's you, and communication protocol.
And, and this is, I mean, some of these are just confirming items. So typically, and I think you've already experienced this, typically there's one person that's sort of assigned to be kind of my liaison. Then Julia, at this point, um, that doesn't mean that you can't email me or ask me questions along the way. I want you to feel like I'm in contact with you and stuff like that. Typically, I communicate most pieces through one person who will then disseminate that. So it's, it's in the sense that you can be Julie.
We created this task force in which Julia sits chairs.
And, um, you're gonna set up meetings this week to talk to everybody individually?
Yeah.
On the board?
Those are, I think, already set up, right?
Okay.
But in general, moving forward, I will be emailing you and asking you, Julia, to, to disseminate that to board members.
Okay, and we're gonna be also seeing more of you.
You might, you might, yep.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so the next item is compensation for superintendent. So would you look up like that?
So, um, at all the task force meetings, which most of the, um, board members and employee board members have been to, we have had a discussion about this topic. And, uh, I wanna thank, um, both Scott and Paul who have done a lot of research on the topic. Um, because one thing we heard from the last recruitment is, um, perhaps maybe one of the indication of the pool was, we didn't have a really a market-based, um, compensation range to offer the candidates.
We also were pretty vague about it as well.
Okay.
Which wasn't helpful.
We're gonna be more specific, although it's gonna be a broad range. So we have looked at the, um, top six districts in the state of Oregon. We've looked at the entire state of Washington, uh, but then really focused in on the top twenty districts in Washington State. We've looked at things from, you know, starting with base salaries, what's sort of insurance, for the kind of, um, retirement annuity they had, expense allowance. Um, in Oregon, the question of first pickup, so the district, um, PPS requires, um, all employees and includes a superintendent to pay their six percent. So, um, if you're somewhere else, you're not probably paying that six percent, um, so we'd take that in consideration. We've also looked at things like if we had a candidate from Washington State or a candidate that doesn't have a, such a large income tax, which, I mean, that's gonna be just everywhere else, um, that, you know, right off the bat, um, you've got about a nine percent income tax hit. So looking at what's, what's the right range, um, there also is a general consensus that, um, we're not gonna have an exotic contract. We're gonna have a pretty straightforward contract, um, most of the compensation is gonna be in base pay. Given that candidates come from other states, we will have some flexibility on some retirement component that will be in addition to base pay. Look at the same healthcare package that any other PPS employee gets, um, and, I mean, we'll put this in the contract, there may be some negotiations at the margins, but probably not a lot. Um, the range that we've come up with, and I'm gonna try to ask for it in a, for a moment, but the, the range, um, so when is between two forty and three thirty-five? And, um, two forty is slightly below what, um, the last superintendent was making. And three thirty-five takes into consideration the market data that we have, of what we need to be. Uh, if you look at our position description, if we're expecting that we're gonna get candidates who've, um, either have been or are sitting superintendents, that, um, the market range is, um, that, that's the competitive market range, um, at least to the upper end of the two hundreds and the three hundreds. Potentially if somebody, if we select a candidate who's outstanding but hasn't actually been a sitting superintendent, so we pick a strong number two who's been in a, you know, decent sized, um, urban district, um, we're likely to do more that, um, sort of at the mid to low end of the range. And that, so that's the rec-, what the recommendation is based on the, um, data that we've looked at so far. That would make us competitive and be able to, um, get, be, get candidates that we think are qualified for the, for the position. Um, the reason why it's a wide range is, the top of the range is probably what it's gonna take to get potentially, um, you know, some of the candidates that we know that we have, because they're already, um, some of them are very close to the top of the range. Um, so really asking somebody else to just make a switch. Um, but also we want to have a broad range because we don't wanna overpay somebody if they're not, if they're coming with less experience. And, um, we still think they're the best candidate, but we don't, we're not gonna start them off as if they have that same level of experience. Um, that, so I'd like to ask the board, um, if it's a general comfort with that range, with the one last asterisk that would be that, um, just today, we've got, um, fairly extensive national data with comparable cities that Scott and Paul are gonna look at to see if, just to make sure that if there's, say, comparable cities, um, that we're not, because we mainly work in Washington, that we're not completely off-base, so that's the one qualifier.
Sounds good.
Does the contract identify potential step increases as, uh, you know, part of the problem in the past, credit superintendent, uh, she went without a pay increase for seven years and then when the board went to make up for that, there was a, a big outcry about, about, all of a sudden she was making a, a larger amount.
So I just got the draft contract this morning, so I haven't looked at that. I guess, um, that'd be a point that the board could provide feedback if they... That, that might also be a point of negotiation.
It's, it's very important in, in, in any job, in, as you, in corporations, I'm sure it's true, uh, in, uh, that you have some kind of an annual review with your, with your, your superintendent. Because perhaps you, you hire the superintendent with this particular focus and mission in mind. And then as things have evolved, that focus has changed and you may still have a superintendent charging at what that goal was. And now you really want the charge to go this direction and, and unless that, that annual review takes place and-
But that's, that's different from step increases and any kind of-
So I'm just, um, so we're gonna note your concern, um, and-
Move on.
Yes, the other component though of a contract, which I don't consider exotic, is possibly retention bonuses. Since, you know, the average duration of a, our driven school superintendent is just a little over two years. So do we wanna have some kind of incentive for being here three or four?
I would think that would be something we, we wanna negotiate, kinda depending on the level of experience.
You do not need to figure it out now, I don't think, but it's, yeah.
Okay.
And there is just one more thing I would like to mention. I don't know that it necessarily has to go into the contract discussion, but I wanna look at it before we get to that. And that is the cost, relative cost of housing, given where they are and moving here. I have for years, ten years, had people breaking my eardrums about Ben Canada's experience coming here from Atlanta. And I don't wanna replicate that.
So, so that should come out, so we'll look at the data.
Yeah, it's exactly, yeah, you, you and me will, yeah.
And that's another thing, it's like, if we hire somebody from Oregon, it's like, they're already experi-, I mean, so they're already experiencing it, um, or they're-
Exactly.
So that, all good things that are noted.
Yeah. Did, did, did the range you have, that includes a six percent ers and something for the income tax?
Well, the two forty to three thirty-five is, um, I mean roughly, so this is again where we're getting to the heart, because it was a little bit about where some of the candidates were.
Right.
Um, and again, they could have a range, um, but looking at sort of Washington State, you have, you know, mid to high two eighties and then they don't, but they don't pay, um, a nine percent in, in tax. But what we don't, we don't know though is what their retirement situation is, cause each one of them is gonna be different. So if they've been in a Washington State system for a long period of time, they might have a lot of equity in that, or they could-
Their ers one isn't like ours ers, ers one, but it's still a different.
Right, or they could have-
Said Mr. Washington ers three.
You know, or they, or they could be new to Washington State and, you know, that's the retirement annuity. So this is why I think we're, it's a little bit, when you get down to two, three candidates, it's gonna, the base salary may be a little bit different. And maybe their retirement's more important because they've been to a couple of different states and don't, aren't vested anywhere.
Same with income tax, California versus Washington.
It is a good range.
Yeah, let's do it.
I'm good.
So the range you're talking about is total compensation, not base?
No, it's base, it's base. Um, but the idea is, the base is going to be really the, the most important and the most substantive way in which we compensate them. I mean, in the past, there's been things like we covered people as adult children to, you know, very, you know, like, their thirties. I mean, they're just, so I think we're allowed for outside income generation. So I think it's like, this is a, we're gonna be paying a, um, a market competitive salary, but you're not getting some added-on health plan that's-
A very straightforward and transparent contract. Residency? They gotta live here.
So they gotta live, they gotta live somewhere nearby? Uh, the board, this was a conversation that the board had in the first part of the search around residency. I always ask boards what their expectation is. And, um, the board, the board's decision was that they must live in the state of Oregon. So unless the board is gonna change that, then that's what I would tell.
I feel really strongly that they have been living in the whole schools this year.
I do too.
As they need to pay the same taxes they're gonna be asking.
Oh, that's a very good argument.
I think that that is a, that is a goal. I don't wanna get in the business of telling somebody where they have to live though, and, and what they have to pay for their house. I, I would not be very happy if someone chose to live outside of our district, but I think that's getting, um, uh, a little too prescriptive.
Yeah, my community is like, if somebody doesn't wanna live in our community, I, I don't think I want them to be our superintendent.
Well, you can get a lot cheaper house in Park Rose and Centennial, so it's-
Right, but then when you're, I mean, I think it's awfully hard to ask the voters to approve a bond or local options or all the others. I mean, we ask a lot financially, so it's like, yeah, it'd be cheaper, well, it'd be cheaper for all of us to live in Park Rose.
Is that something that you see, Hank?
There is at least one candidate that has a record.
But is that a clause that you see sometimes in contracts?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Um, yes, I do sometimes see, um, I do sometimes see that, yeah.
I mean, it, it's, it's fine with me. I think it's a little oddly prescriptive, but I don't, it's not a big deal.
Yeah, I, I think maybe to the community, just so they get, they feel-
Yeah.
What's going on here, and so they're accessible to the community, and the community is accessible to them.
I would hope they would want to.
Also, in my experience, if we don't have them starting out in the community, I think we're setting them up for failure. I, I think the community would really resent it and I don't think the issue would go away.
Looks like you might have prevailed.
That's fine, I mean-
Well, I mean, it never even occurred to me that somebody wouldn't live-
Me neither, I can't imagine that anybody-
Oh, I saw, but when the question get asked, then it's that can, some candidates don't, and it's like, so I, some of the contracts that, um, I was sent, uh, some of the other Oregon con-, Oregon superintendents in the larger districts, they do have resi-, residency clauses.
Yeah, I'd say it's mixed. I mean, sometimes it's, we don't care, we just wanna break superintendent, other times like, no, we want it to be in our neighborhood. Okay, so residency is-
PPS.
PPS district, so, okay.
The next one is a selection meeting outcome, so we all agree tomorrow nights, there's two objectives, one is like the candidates. Um, and then the other thing that we want to make sure that people come, um, ready to do is agree upon some sort of parameters for further additions to the, to, to, so we, say we come up with seven, Hank calls people and five say, no, I've decided to do something different, or like, we have a process by which we replenish it. And then we have either identified candidates or characteristics that Hank, without having to come back to the board, is able to sort of move down with us.
So maybe we can rank order of the people who don't make first cut?
Or that they're non-stuckers, yeah.
Great. Wait, say that last part again. So we have to replenish.
So if, if we pick seven, however many, and then one or two-
Excuse me, Julie? Julie, we can hear you!
I know, damn, but this guy almost hit me, oh my gosh!
Okay, stay safe out there. High five, it's crazy. Okay, as we were saying, so that if we need to replenish the pack-
Somebody drugged out, we can, we can go to the worst-
Keep it real, cut.
Go to the ones that did the first cut, we would go back.
Unless we, when we cut them the first time, decide that we don't wanna ever, we can, yeah.
Which I think is also an important thing to do.
Right, right. Okay, um, calendar? That, we need a little comic relief.
So are we gonna do interview questions?
So I did interview questions, I put there the same interview questions from last time around, I asked for input, I have not gotten any input yet, so, um...
Is that the deadline yet?
No, that's true. What was the deadline?
But the deadline is, the deadline potentially can be between tomorrow night and the morning of the thirtieth.
Okay, yeah.
So-
All right. Cause I didn't-
I, I might, and that might be challenging if it's the morning of the thirtieth and we have a candidate on the thirtieth.
We have to agree on that at some point.
Right.
We've gotta settle it, so, yeah, if people haven't-
Twenty ninth.
I don't know if that's gonna work.
What do you want? What did you say, Hank?
If I say Monday night-
You said originally tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
I said twenty seventh, which maybe is-
So that's, that's what I need, cause if you're gonna give me input, I need to have some time to actually take that input and insert it and come up with new questions. So, um-
Wait a minute, can I clarify something? Where, where are we having the first candidates?
So we have the can, a candidate that's going, that's a local candidate who is going to be-
Yeah, but-
Do you not want me to reveal more than, just who, who would be unavailable in the window that we have set aside for our main pool of candidates? So we've agreed to do an interview on, um, is that Wednesday morning or Thursday morning?
If the candidate is selected.
Thursday morning, if that candidate emerges as somebody that we wanna interview at all. Thursday morning. Yeah, it's on, uh, before our retreat, actually cutting into our retreat.
Got it.
Yeah.
So, so just so we're like, so is that, so tomorrow? And then is the board giving me license to create those interview questions? Or would the board like to create a subset of people to meet with me and develop those revised interview questions?
You mean just based on the modifications from the input you get relative to what we've got already?
Right, so if I get input from a board member, I'll, I could either take it verbatim or filter through my HR hat or meet with some board, other board members that wanna sort of govern the interview process, uh, the interview question process. So I just wanna know what, what you want me to do with that.
Amy, Mike, how did you feel about the questions last time?
I, I came away thinking they were very solid.
Yeah, and we were.
What'd you think?
Well, I've gone through almost all of them and I only had my, you know, really, like, some were too long.
And the other thing too is that we were pretty disciplined in that process, but we were asking follow-on questions.
Oh, yeah.
Somewhat spontaneously, not too crazy, but, yeah, so I think everyone felt like it, it worked.
So it sounds like Scott, you wanted some, some input.
My, uh, my question was if I come up with another suggested question and nobody reviews it, does that mean it gets in?
Well, that was my question.
So Hank would be the filter, unless, unless some people wanna volunteer to be the question.
So it's your job to say that, that question is crazy.
That's what I'm, I'm just trying to find out what my role is, are you comfortable with me in that role?
Which, I'm, I am, actually.
Yep, I'm not signing up for it. Great.
Great, okay, so midnight tomorrow, please email me whatever, whatever edits you want.
Got it.
Okay. Oh.
Consultant interviews with board members, so those are already set up with everybody, right?
Yep.
Yep.
I think number nine already did.
Yep.
That's, um.
So Roseanne's been working diligently, we already, we were, already talked about nine. Roseanne's been working diligently on an interview scheduled for the weekend of July seventh and eighth, but Hank was feeling like we might need a little more time based on, you know.
And it's seven day, the ninth, right?
Seven day, the ninth, sorry, right, yes.
Well, since there might, we might need one additional day, but only for somebody, say of the seven-ish.
Yeah.
If somebody was just not like, you know, not in the country that, for example, that weekend, because they're all three consecutive days.
And I have reached out to candidates to find their July schedules and most of them have given back. And there are a couple of people with conflicts that weekend. So if we could find like a, like a two-hour block, ideally a four-hour block, but maybe even at least a two-hour block sometime, soon thereafter.
Well, maybe it'd be good to see if those candidates are even finalists.
So we could do that, we could do that and we could just broach that.
Let's just play it when we need it.
We can play that tomorrow night.
But it would be good to have that tomorrow night, if you know there's any, any of the candidates that can't make it and then we can.
Yeah.
I can do that, that's fine.
Ask them their availability.
The second part of the calendar though, I think we should address, which is round two, since we now know what that looks like. I think we should do it on people's calendars and, did I see an email with those dates or am I imagining?
I'm imagining.
Okay, we haven't done that yet, okay. So.
So we're not gonna actually ask for people right now to say whether it works or not, but why don't you give the, the date range you're looking at?
Okay. Uh, I would look at, um, I would look at either sometime between July 18th and July 22nd.
So I'm out of town all those days, but if that's what works and is, you know, the schedule that you wanna keep, I could participate back home.
That, well, week of, uh, eight, the week of like eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-first are not good days for me. Um, the nineteenth for sure, I'm out the entire day and potentially the, the day before and after, that's just a bad week. I, yeah.
Yeah, I, I really, I really want more, like, I want the whole board there, like.
So let's talk about what we need, though, that, that point will be to four-ish, so.
That could be one day.
It could be one day.
One, one long day, you could do it in one day, it's a long day, but you could.
Except that's gonna be a complicated round two, because we're gonna, that's gonna involve the.
So.
I think the twenty-third, everyone's here. Sunday, the twenty-third.
Yeah, so we can do that, I can't, I can't do that, but I can have one of my colleagues do the twenty-third.
So.
I could do, I could do the morning of the twenty-third, but I can't do the entire day of the twenty-third. But it doesn't have to be Hank, Hank or you.
You said it was you, I think.
Is it the twenty-second? No?
Uh huh.
That, oh, you said you're not here.
I mean, I could probably come back, I know, I need to.
So are we looking for weekend?
We're looking for whatever, whatever works for really, typically the board tells me what the date is and then I try to make it work, if not, I bring somebody, but.
So the week of the twenty-fourth, what about?
So the, the thing is, we don't want, so then we're getting.
That's a long time in between.
The, and, the week of the twenty-fourth, I'm gone.
What about the seventeenth?
I'm out, but again, I could participate back home. Julie, can you do the seventeen?
You know what, um, are we only talking a couple hours? I've got a big D V thing, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and the seventeenth's a bad, I mean, I'm working that week, so it depends how much time.
Did everybody, was everybody attending, was everybody who got on the phone there?
Yes.
Uh, I think you would be very important, given that as it happened before, you would be the person responsible for bringing the community input to us.
I, I think you're kinda key to.
So maybe there's, maybe there's a solution, so I need to be on the mountain on the twenty-third weekend, or maybe we could.
Which mountain? This one?
Welch's.
Almond?
Oh, good, oh, 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 only Welch's got.
And pause, you fly out six o'clock on the twenty-third.
We can change it. So what about the, if you did, what if you did like the.
Twenty-third during the day, one day, starting in the morning?
Yeah, but we couldn't do the twenty-second, some of you can't be there.
But we could just do the twenty-third, starting in the morning.
I was thinking we could do the twenty-third on the mountain.
Oh.
Then I don't have to, you know.
Me, I could secure a room.
What does that work for Julie? Julie, does the twenty-third work for you?
I'm working. What day, this is a.
The Sunday.
Can we, can we, can we.
Yeah, that works, yes, that works.
Twenty-third works.
Yeah, pretty sure, let me just, um, Jim.
No, what?
I think it's okay, because it's, you know, not open to the public, right, especially reporters, like the travel.
Oh, yeah.
So Jim and Stephanie, we might need to know whether we need to.
Be outside the district.
Is there executive session outside of the district?
Yeah, I, I don't think there'd be restrictions, as long as you notice it where.
So if we can get like a meeting on that tomorrow, like whether we, that's okay, I'm pretty sure we.
I think just accessibility-wise, we'd have to think about that. Accessibility like, not.
Except for what about.
Are we wondering the traditional seven?
So, and you can come out.
You do the community panel on the twenty-second and then the twenty-third, all of that.
Yeah.
Community panel, twenty-fourth.
Or twenty-second and then, yeah.
So you're leaving Sunday at six, Paul?
Yes, although we may need to change that, other, the practical point is that I need to be in Denver first thing Monday morning.
Well, there's a red eye that goes to Denver.
Not helping, not helping, so about.
Three thirty in the morning?
Yeah, twenty-third.
Twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth.
Okay.
And the other thing, if I can ask, kind of, I think, so, so there's at least a littler conversation about this, uh, sort of an informal board kind of, like, one picture I have is that board members are not all going in at the same time, so maybe two are meeting with the candidate and then another two type thing, so. So if the board isn't in quorum at any given time, that would change the rules, if that's what it needs to be, executive session, right?
That's possible.
Oh, yeah. Was that still what you were thinking, the small numbers?
Well, they will have already been there for the seven.
I, I think we're gonna, we're gonna wanna meet a seven, nothing else to discuss the community input.
How did you do the first, the first set of interviews, all the reporters were there?
Mm-hmm.
And they didn't say anything.
Yeah.
They did, they added with the interim superintendent search, but not the.
I don't even think they were there the whole time for the first round. And it was only Bethany.
Yeah, and I think she was out of town for the first set of interviews, but she would have been there and she probably.
Well, so you'll figure out what, what kind of support you need there. Okay, so that's.
That's a good plan.
I've got nine minutes.
Oh, yes. I don't think we can do this in nine minutes, Julia, so we've developed our July interview schedule, that's the part we're finding about tonight, your schedule.
The one guiding principle to everybody is like not to have long gaps between, I don't know, exactly.
That's when all the speculation starts to bester.
So, um, that'll be a little too graphic for you.
That's good.
At some point, can we talk about, I mean, because we had talked about round two as being a sort of non-traditional interview something.
Right.
We've even talked about the same thing.
Right, so, so we need to do that.
We need to do that, so let's get through our first.
So if we're gonna schedule the twenty-second, twenty-third for round two, we may as well try to go for round three and schedule that.
Let's see, I think, we do it tomorrow night.
Sure.
So, um, how about Hank tomorrow morning and you send out, like ideally, here's, knowing these dates, here's, here is the time period when we do round three and send, you can send it out and we can try and see if we can land on something.
Okay, and you want background checks completed in between round two and three as well as contract, right? So if there is that.
Well, contracts, I think is gonna be pretty.
Yeah.
And then round three is when the stakeholder group, if it becomes active.
The twenty-second. Is the, would the.
Round two, round two.
On the twenty-second.
On the twenty-second.
Okay.
Okay, the last items are just, to each, we're not really, I don't think we're discussing, well, some of them are already discussed.
We're already discussed, so the, the last item, this is just an informational item for the board, unless somebody has a concern, is that, or an issue they'd like to ask about it, um, the H Y A, um, contract is, expires at the end of, ending days, the end of the school district's fiscal year, June 30th, which is this week, so, um, we have asked Stephanie to prepare an addendum with basically three components to extend the, um, the date to September 30th, um, so that allows us, um, just a month of little room, but I know what we're gonna be doing by then. Um, but it gives us a month of little room and then, um, the other item, we have reimbursable expenses, um, but clearly with, you know, candidates coming, we need to, uh, have additional money allocated and, uh, so the overall cap will need to be increased and we'll need to increase the allocation for reimbursable expenses and then there's just, um, right now, lack of clarity between H Y A and P B S about, um, how much of the set fee, so it's not an additional fee, but how much of the set fee which we already need to pay has been paid and that, but that's a, a fact that's, you know, resolvable, but we'll just figure that out and if we need to add it to the, um, contract amount, we'll do that in the cap amount. So is there any questions or anybody wants to see the contract, I have it somewhere here, here. And that it apparently does not need to be, to, does it require board approval because it's below the threshold amount? So we handle, handle the standard way, all other, I'm looking for, to Jim and Stephanie for not, have we handled all of, like, all of their contracts that are less than the threshold?
Right, it's more just understanding, I mean, we'll just set it, the cap at where it seems to fit, given, I just, the only thing that's sort of an unknown is like, I don't know what the reimbursable expenses would look like, because, I mean, it depends on how many candidates you bring.
So, great question, so, um, now that Hank has a better idea that they're seven-ish, four-ish, and maybe two, um, tomorrow night, um, and so he has an idea of what his, his expenses are gonna be now, a little bit, um, but tomorrow night when we look at the candidates, you know, clearly, if it's heavy on the Northwest, um, that'll be cheaper, uh, but Stephanie will come up with a number and then add some cushion and then obviously if we don't spend the money, it's over.
It's good.
Is that agreeable to everybody? Is there anything we didn't, we did not cover? I have a question for you.
Yes.
Can the dates of when we're doing these, or dates, I don't know if that's, it's about meaning, but, um, is there any issue about us identifying the dates now or should we announce them later?
The dates, now, like, to the candidate or the public?
Well, just as part of, like, the recap, then.
I don't see any reason why you couldn't that much, I mean.
Expecting.
Yeah, I think that's, that's reasonable, like, they're all ten.
Julie, do you have any thing?
I really couldn't catch that, it was cutting out really not too much.
Just talking about calendaring.
About what?
Calendar.
Yeah, um, so I have to double check with somebody on calendar tomorrow to make sure I thought it all.
Yep, um, maybe Roseanne, could you send out to everybody, just here's, here's what we're doing?
Yes.
Or what we kind of agree to.
Yes.
Do you have something else?
No, I just, I, I, I hope we can plan on starting early on Sunday morning on the according to their.
Yeah. You need to be done by.
I need to be there by, by.
Yeah.
Oh, we should be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we're doing a sort of a special.
Yeah.
Great. I haven't found one.
Could be on. I should go with the non-harm, you can do it, thank you.
Great, I'll.
Have a, look for a round of.
Do you have?
Okay, let's see, a climate this whole.
Thank you.
Yes, we are.
We're done. Julie?